I call this meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed to order. I'm Vice President Steve Mittermeyer adjudicating the current meeting. The president is out of town. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to contract negotiations and personnel items.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. We are in exec session. Just a quick note to the public, we will return here briefly to exit executive session and then adjourn for a tenure celebration. The public meeting will begin at 7:00. At this time, I'd like a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And at this point, we will recess for roughly 40 minutes until 7:00 PM. I guess I need a motion to go into recess.
So moved.
Second.
As long as there's cake.
Yes. Got a motion and a second.
Yes.
Do we have a formal?
All in favor? Motion passed. This time, I'd like a motion to return from recess.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we are in session. We are now on point 3.1 of our agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not know of any agenda additions or modifications. Is there anyone who wants to update or modify the agenda? At this point, I'd like to accept a motion to accept the agenda as...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? At this point, we are going to celebrate pride with the... Go ahead, Vera.
Great. Well, we have some formal pride, but before we get to the formal science fair portion of the pride, we'll turn it over to James.
Awesome. So these past couple of weeks, we've had some pretty great accomplishments from our students. Our varsity baseball and varsity boys' track teams have both won the Mahal championship title. And the boys' track team, with the boys' track team concluding a winning sweep of cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track and field Mahals. The baseball boys had their first sectional game this past Tuesday, and they won the first game, so hopefully they're going to go on to a hopeful win in the next game. Our music department was once again in action as they sent up president's men to perform for a recent Chamber of Commerce breakfast. We also had many AP students, including classes from English, French, and History, who went down to the Metropolitan Museum of Art, which holds many amazing pieces of art from multiple different cultures, eras, and ideas. And we had a junior who qualified to row in the Scholastic Rowing Association of American National Championships, which is obviously a national race down in New Jersey. He qualified rowing in a single boat. Seems pretty tough, and it's pretty awesome, I guess. It is awesome. And last night, there was an awards night that FDR hosted, in which many students were recognized and awarded for many accomplishments and skills that they have. And with the multiple awards given out, many congratulations were brought with it. And it seemed there to remind the students of how great people they are and what skills they have and how great the rest of their lives can be with the memorials and all the awards. Yeah, that was good.
Great.
If I can interrupt, because I know James is not going to mention it all, but James participated in Mahals. I happened to be there cheering him on, and he was a double point scorer in the 800 and 1,500 meter runs, a fourth and a second. Congratulations, James.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other things. The Hyde Park Central School District was recognized by the Hyde Park Visual Environment Committee, and we were awarded signs, an award for our new wooden signs because they were visually pleasing, aesthetically befitting of the historical community. So Elliot and Doug Heater and I went, and we were presented with that award. Ralph R. Smith also had their student expo, huge turnout from the parents and the students, so it was a wonderful evening all the way around. And the Hyde Park Chamber of Commerce also gives some of our senior scholars awards. Trey from the Anderson School received an award at the chamber dinner. Megan Marshall, who's with us tonight, received an award. Mia Ridgway and Tanner Losi also received awards from the Hyde Park Chamber of Commerce. And just a thank you to everybody who exercised their right to vote. We have 18,000 voters in the Hyde Park Central School District. We get about 2,000 voters out each year, so we're just thankful that people take time out of their schedule to exercise their right to vote. And with that, we'll turn formal pride over to Kim Niesel, our Director of Math and Science. Steve and I will join you two.
So we just wanted to take a moment and recognize our Hyde Park District Science Fair winners. So as I call your name, we have several here tonight. I'd ask that you just come on up and stay up until we're finished. I don't think she's here tonight, but Frankie Goraz won third place for fifth grade. Oh, perfect timing. Come on up. Congratulations.
Frankie, and I'm glad she showed up just in time, was also, I want to say at least in 10 years, and I didn't check back further, but the first place winner that we've ever had in fifth grade in the last 10 years at the Duchess County Regional Science Fair. So that's quite an accomplishment. Another third place winner was Trevor Whitaker. I don't know if... There we go, okay. And then we have another entrant to the Duchess County Regional Science Fair who won an honorable mention at that event, our second place winner in fifth grade, Steve Bauer. And our first place winner from fifth grade was Zoe Showalter Flowers. She's home studying, so that's a good thing. So then, at the district fair, we had a tie for third place. I don't think he's here tonight, Scott Enist. And here tonight is Derek Canenberg. Our middle school second place winner is here tonight, Isaiah Bell. And also here tonight, our first place middle school winner, Sarah Canenberg. Our high school participants and winners, our second place winner is Georgia Pritchard. I think she's probably home studying as well. And we do have another entrant in the regional science fair for Duchess County who won an honorable mention and also two awards, the Jerry Lieberman Memorial Award and the George Banta Award. And that is our valedictorian, Joey Calazo. So I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and thank everyone for entering the district science fair and those of you that took the time to enter the regional fair. And I think we'll just pause for a little picture up here. And again, thank you. Please recognize all of these wonderful students.
Do you want to pose for a picture? I think... Oh, if you'd care, quick. Which way?
I don't know. I'll figure it out.
Yep.
Last call.
Emphasizing your video and movie taking and picture-taking qualities as well.
We should let people know they can go if they want to.
And for those of you who were here for that presentation, we're about to start the business meeting now, and if you wish to leave, there's no shame in fleeing while you can.
I'd like to thank the science teachers for coming out and supporting tonight. And I know they might be here for the other presentation too, but it's nice to have a room full of science.
Okay. At this point, we'll hear the superintendent's report.
Just briefly, I'd like to thank the HPTA for once again sponsoring the Ice Cream Social and Book Swap on the night of the vote. Through that one event alone, they were able to give two more $1,000 scholarships to students in the Hyde Park Central School District. Just an update that the Violet Avenue School is, even though it's already on the National Historic Register, the historic register for the town of Poughkeepsie also went through their process, so now it is recognized as a historic landmark in the town of Poughkeepsie. Also, lastly, the Hyde Park Visual Environment contacted me. The Hyde Park Central School District is actually owner or part-owner of the stone wall on Route 9G, and they asked permission to do a beautification process of the stone wall on Route 9G, so I said yes, thank you very much. And I wasn't entirely sure we had ownership of that stone wall, but once it gets going, we'll find out a few more details. And anybody who wants to go up, and they're always looking for volunteers, so since it belongs to the school district, it'd be nice if when they go up there, maybe some of us can go pitch in, so that should be interesting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear a presentation on Common Core from Aviva.
Thank you. I want to start with, both of the presentations that I'm making tonight are actually part of our board goals, so here's the chance you're fulfilling, letting the public hear about how we are implementing Common Core and also to explore financial literacy. So we do have our directors here, and the directors really put this together. They are in charge of implementing how Common Core is integrated into our instruction and instruction in general. Kim Niesel, you just saw, Director of Math and Science. We have Melinda DeMayo here, Fine Arts. Jennifer Kreiser, Amy Humanities. Heather Chadwell-Dennis, Special Education. Eric Romanino, PE, Health and Athletics. He was just here. And Rick Wirtz is our Director of Tech. So these are the ELA instructional shifts, and we have been working on these for a while, but it's a simple way of really seeing what is changing, what does Common Core mean compared to the old New York State learning standards. I'm not going to read the slides to you, I just want you to see. These are the major shifts. And these are Common Core math instructional shifts. And for teachers, again, this hasn't changed, but it still feels new to many people. Okay, don't expect you to read this, but I want you to know that we are moving toward a complete digital curriculum for math and ELA. Many of the units have been developed by teachers over the years in curriculum writing. Some of them are directly modules from Engage New York and New York State, and they're... A lot of them are up already, but they're all getting up there so that every teacher in the district can see and access curriculum. And in many areas in the district, teachers are using them all the time already. So these are from daily lessons to overall units, actual materials, everything is up there. So that way, when people say, "What is the curriculum and where is it?", that's where that is. So that's in addition to textbooks and other materials that we have. Okay, so 6th through 12th, meaning 6th through 12th grade, data teams chose priority standards to focus on, and that's for this school year, 2016, 2017. We do hold data team meetings throughout the district. Assessments are based on these priority standards. Goals for students are based on the MAP assessments, and the RIT scores are for ELA, and we also have Math MAP assessments and monitoring student progress. So this is just one way that we use our assessments and also the standards, just pick a few things to really focus on for goal-setting, rather than looking at the whole body of standards all the time. Okay, and these are some examples of connected practices district-wide. I did have a few things I want to say and remember. Okay. So again, I'm not going to read the slide, but I do want to add that for Fine and Performing Arts, musical scores as well as visual arts pieces are regarded as text and are increasing complexity through the grade level. So this is not something that is just for math, science, English, and social studies. In physical education, there's awareness of math and ELA standards and a focus on the fluencies at each grade level. Also, there are grade-level placemats that have been developed with the standards that are shared. I know that they're on the website and available for families, and it really is just for parents, you know, like a cheat sheet of what these things are. Okay, so here are some concrete examples district-wide at elementary and secondary of more connected practices. And some of it may be a little small. So at the elementary, there's a lot... You know, Kim's been doing a lot of work with building staff on connected practices. And, you know, if you're an elementary teacher, these will be familiar terms for you, but it's basically looking at, you know, how do we actualize Common Core math and build that deep understanding of math concepts in the classroom. Writers Workshop, K-35. The Generation Ready Literacy Coaching, we are in our second year of coaching with a woman, Linda Weinbaum, who's through Generation Ready, but it's really through Teachers College in Columbia. She's exceptional. She spends most of her time in classrooms modeling, supporting teachers, and then meeting with principals and teachers. And we've really seen, you know, a lot of growth in that area. So it's both for reading and for writing. At the secondary, the FDR Writing Project, which I believe you heard about probably two years ago from Mr. Partey in his presentation, and focusing, you know, AVID is so closely linked, you know, they have... It's called WICER. It stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And inquiry is all about critical thinking, and all of the curriculum in AVID is very well-linked to Common Core, and they've done that purposefully, but it's also about depths of understanding. These are the writing units of study that we use kindergarten through fifth grade. Lucy Cawkins has been around for a really long time. When I was teaching Writers Workshop in the late 80s, early 90s, we used her writing lessons, but they're much different now. It's much deeper, more connected. Students spend a lot more time writing rather than making hardcover books and reading them to each other, so it's really evolved. Teachers, you know, the feedback we've gotten from teachers about the Everyday Counts calendar math is really positive. It's a, you know, to really embed math into the morning meeting and reinforce math concepts. And these are Common Core math parent newsletters. They were sent home for every Common Core math unit, and I'm sure they're available if you missed it. Okay, so there's a lot happening in science. There are New York State science learning standards adopted this year. Implementation begins in the fall. Secondary work has been done throughout this school year during department meetings, and there's planning for the summer and into the fall. At the elementary level, we use Science 21, and the program itself has embedded training starting at kindergarten through first grade, second grade, and we're going to be doing some professional development, or Kim will be doing some professional development with teachers next year for grades three through five, because it takes Science 21 a few years to catch up to the upper grades, and the science standards are out now. So we want to really... So she's making sure that they're up to speed and we don't have to wait for Science 21 training. And social studies has new frameworks, and there's also curriculum work happening this summer. We are in a collaboration with Northern Putnam Westchester Bowseys, and they're gathering regional best unit plans, best lesson plans around social studies, and teachers are going to be engaged with exploring those, adding to those, and we'll continue that work next year as well. You heard already a lot of the winners in the STEAM Fair. It was wonderful. There were 38 FDR student volunteers, three teacher volunteers, two directors, two board members, FDR principal, myself. It was an incredible, fun, really engaging evening. I believe it was the first time the arts were actively involved, and we definitely want to keep that going. We might outgrow the room, and we'll figure that out. That's a good problem to have. I will just add that Project Lead the Way has been involved, and the students there in the robotics club, and that's also a really nice tie-in. Okay, so these are some of the folks you saw. These are some nice pictures, and I believe that I have the names, but I think they're all the kids that just got the certificate, so... And again, these are K-12 directors responsible for not only the presentation itself, but everything in it. So I just want to say what a privilege it is for me to work with all of the directors in Hyde Park and, you know, just how much I learn from them and with them, and thank you. And thank you for being here tonight as well to support us. So do you have any questions?
Looks like there are no questions. Thank you, Aviva.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And now on to financial literacy.
Right. Okay, so this was a goal of the board, and it actually has come up in multiple contexts, this idea of how and when do we teach financial literacy? Are we teaching it enough? You know, this is a really important thing for students to know before they graduate. So I started with what we currently have. So this is what we currently do already in terms of financial literacy. So I mentioned the Everyday Counts calendar math. That happens in elementary school now, and that is a daily activity. In middle school, in grade six, these are the concepts that relate to financial literacy that are covered within the curriculum already for every student. Then in seventh grade, these are the concepts that are covered in the regular math curriculum and in social studies. Supply and demand is part of social studies. Middle school eighth grade, these are the concepts that are covered in the regular eighth grade curriculum, and these are some seventh grade social studies concepts. High school. So social studies were into courses. So in our DCC Economics and DCC Government courses, we're covering some of these concepts. And in economics in grade 12, personal finance and investigate how. Okay, and high school math, in modern-day math, intermediate algebra, graphing calculators, Algebra I and II, there are concepts embedded about that deal with financial literacy. Okay, in science, there's... In earth science. And art, and you'll have to help me, APE. Is it AP Earth Science?
Environmental.
Environmental science, okay. Okay, even in music, tracking the cost of instrument repair and maintenance, and in business, career, and financial management, which is really the course where this happens through the whole course. But every student doesn't have the opportunity to take this one course, which is why we really wanted to look at, where else in the curriculum does this live? Okay, so we talked about next steps, because the goal was really about a plan and some thoughts going forward. So what we decided to do was to explore having a mandatory two-week unit that's in the economics course, because all seniors take that course. It's a nice fit. And we planned for curriculum writing for teachers to put that two-week unit together this summer, so that could start, or the plan is for that to start in the fall. And then, this is something we're just exploring, a collaboration with the Federal Credit Union. It's something that we've done before at the school. It's been a few years. It's called Mad City Money, and it's a whole, you know, hands-on experience that kids have, and they can come through it, whether it's on the stage or in another space. So that's something, you know, we have a contact already who's sending us materials, and teachers have started to look at it and make that contact. So that would be like a one-time experience that may happen, you know, during that unit or just at the end of that course in the middle of the semester and then again at the end of the year, so every student has a chance. And that's all I have for now. Do you have any questions about financial literacy and the plans?
I'm a little intrigued... I'm sorry. I'm a little intrigued as to the Mad City Money. Can you tell me a little more about what that is or just...
Well, I told you almost everything I already know about it. But I can share more. I mean, they have a website, and I just looked at it very generally, and they have videos and a lot of materials, but...
Yeah. I actually can jump in a little, and I know some of the directors, because when we've had it here, I went to the event. The students come in and they're given a scenario. It's a mock scenario where they have a job with an income, and then they get a set of cards. They either have a car payment, or they're shopping for a car. They have a house, or they're looking for a house or an apartment. And then they need to put together a budget that includes their entertainment, their food, and, you know, paying all their bills. So it really is a mock run-through of what it looks like to have a certain income with certain bills, and what do you have left over? And some of it starts with, what are the types of things that you want to be doing? And then they learn that, "I can't possibly afford this," or "I can't possibly afford that." So when the federal credit union comes in, there is an opportunity for a lot of volunteers to set up at stations where students could go to get either financial advice or information about a mortgage or information about how to buy a car. And so it's really... How am I doing, Kim? Jen? So it's really a mock run-through of... They literally have to learn how to live within their means.
Great.
I just had a question about the two-week mandatory part...
I just had a question about the two-week mandatory part of the course. How will that affect the curriculum for the DCC Economics? Right? Because that has a set, doesn't that have a set curriculum based on that? I mean, is there enough time to put in two weeks, you know, after maybe that? I don't know how that would align.
Well, I could find out more, but what, my understanding is that, do you?
Well, I think I might know, and Marian Mullen, the DCC economics teacher's here, so she can correct me if we're speaking. We actually worked on this Tuesday, yesterday, Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. At the high school, the DCC economics course is set by DCC, as are the textbooks. However, inside of many of the economics textbooks, there is already built-in financial literacy curriculum. With that said, we also run APs for the first two weeks in April. And one thought we were having, because what happens during those first two weeks in April to a college-level course, is many students are in and out doing their APs. So what will happen is we'll use that time, that AP time, as an opportunity for kids kind of to do the financial literacy curriculum, but more of an independent-based project where we looked, and Marian wasn't with us, but we looked at some things like Spent, which is an online game that talks about living paycheck to paycheck. There are some readings we've already selected as, some texts we've selected as part of this financial literacy unit around, you know, insurance, health insurance, car insurance, those kinds of things. So we're really looking to put it in in a space where it becomes an independent project for the DCC students, but where they still get it, and where Marian, where Ms. Mullen can make it meaningful for them as well. So they need support, she'll be there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Marian, listen. Come on in.
You had said that the career in finance class is the main class that covers financial literacy. I take that class. I was wondering why it's not made as a requirement for high schools these weeks?
I think there are a lot of students who take that class, who would, who find it so valuable that they think that everybody should take it. And I think the quandary for us is that there's already so many requirements for high school graduation that might not be as difficult for some students to attain, and is really difficult for other students to attain. So we're trying to find a way to not add another hurdle for some students to get over, and at the same time, make some of that information available to them. So, I mean, that's the main reason we didn't just go ahead and make another requirement.
So typically, a board meeting isn't a conversation the way it appears at the moment. So we welcome input from the public. Could you hold your questions until public participation? Thank you.
And then when the whole public participation is over, I can answer those questions.
Sure. So I have a laundry list of things that I'd just like to, a quick yes or no. So balancing a checking account or reconciling a checking account, will that be covered someplace in the curriculum?
I'm not going to be able to answer all the questions.
Fine. I saw that setting up a realistic budget is already part of it. The application process for loans and credit cards, is that, that would be something that I would like to see built into it. Check writing and an understanding of what goes into a credit rating. And I understand I'm asking for a lot, and that's also why I've asked for it to be spread across multiple years in multiple parts of the curriculum. But I do know a number of kids who recently graduated, and I've suggested you should go out and get a credit card now. And for some, it can be a daunting task to go out, figure out where to apply, what the features are, how to manage it once they have it. So that's one of the reasons why I asked for this presentation effectively. Taxes, both withholding and at least running through the process of filing. And at least summarize the process of buying a house and a car. And by no means is this an exhaustive list, but I think that if you covered those, many of the, you know, the adult experiences of handling money would be covered.
Right. And I don't think those are out of the realm of typical curriculum in financial literacy, and certainly outside of the one business course. Those things are parts of these pieces that we're talking about, but having this list is a good starting place, so that if it's not elsewhere, we can certainly look for where that might fit in the two-week mandatory curriculum we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from the board? Very good. Thank you for the work of both you and the directors on this.
Thank you.
This time, we'll hear an update about the DLT and facilities recommendations. So for those who don't understand, our TLAs are three-letter acronyms. A DLT is the District Leadership Team, and they cover all aspects of the district, and it's a combined committee of administrators and other folks that I'm sure Greer will mention in more detail.
Great. Thank you. And welcome, students. I understand Mrs. Mullen is responsible for getting many of you here, and I see you taking notes. And please know you can visit our website at any time. The presentation is online, but keep taking notes, because, no, we're very happy you're here. This is actually a great night to have a packed house. And as Steve mentioned, we have a district leadership team. I'm going to ask all the members of the district leadership team to stand up for a minute, because many of you are here this evening. Okay, give a round of applause, District Leadership Team. So thank you. So many people are here this evening to hear this presentation, and certainly a great showing of district leadership team members. We actually have three students on the district leadership team this year. They've been incredibly valuable. The input is been fantastic. We have parents. We have at least five community members. And what's great is, you know, their kids are already grown, or they're just community members, so we have, they bring a diverse perspective. So we have parents with the parents' perspective, community members with the community in mind, students who are firsthand right in the thick of things. We have three board members, and certainly teachers, other staff members, Danielle's here, and administrators. So thank you all for coming. My job is to keep all the students in the room awake and interested. I know that most of you are seniors, but we are planning the future of our schools for maybe some of your siblings, and hopefully, just because you're good citizens, you know that continuous improvement in our schools is a good thing for any community. So with that, I'm going to move quickly, because some of this will be, oh, the other way, is repeat information. And again, we'll make sure that we have plenty of room for questions. Some of this is background. We started this process two years ago. This school district had several planning communities, and we called them silos, like a barn silo. We had a finance committee. We had an instructional committee. We had a facilities committee. But everybody was operating in complete isolation. And the only way to have a cohesive organization and to make really effective change is that there's one planning process, and it's all embedded in what's right for students. What is the best way for teaching and learning to happen in the Hyde Park Central School District? So we took all the isolated committees, and we said, if you still want to participate, we're going to have one committee. So we broke down the silos, and we had one committee. We've spent two years getting together. The first year was real guidance in how do we really go about strategic planning in this new and cohesive way? This year, we had two main focuses. I don't know, that's not the right way to say that, but anyway, fokai. We were looking at our instructional program. We are now a four Cs school district. We are committed to delivering instruction that integrates the four Cs: creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. We are going to begin next year with rolling out critical thinking as the foundation for how we deliver our instruction and how we assess in a cohesive way. So this is all very new. This year was just teacher awareness and staff awareness of what the four Cs are, and letting them know that moving forward, we are really going to focus on the critical thinking aspect as our foundation. Keep going the wrong way here. This is just a list of our meeting dates. So what were the things that the whole committee looked at? As I said, there were two points of focus. The second was our facilities. So we looked at our building condition survey. We looked at our debt service. Here's a financial literacy piece for you. All school districts, we have seven or eight buildings, if you include transportation in this building. We are always going to have a loan to maintain our properties. It costs a lot of money to keep all of these buildings going. So we looked at our debt service. We looked at our building condition survey. What were the repairs that were recommended? We looked at what our current capital projects were. Those are the building projects that are going on now. And then throughout the years, we looked at what we were going to do with our facility. We talked about, okay, so where's the instructional team going? How are they doing in their planning of implementing the four Cs? So the full team was involved in looking at capital projects, and the instructional members of the team were planning the future professional development, so that we can move forward with the four Cs and critical thinking as a real starting point. What did we do to? One of the things that happened was we really looked at, where did the facilities team of prior years leave off? And one of the number-one things that the, all the facilities planning that's gone on in the last 10 years in the district said, you have to look at our science labs. Our science labs are 50 to 70 years old. You need to update our science labs. Our students cannot engage in true scientific projects and research with the conditions of our labs. So we honored the fact that all the previous facilities committees were recommending We took all of the information that we had. We toured a science lab. Previous committees had toured other science labs. We took all that information together, and we said, okay, if we're going to plan a future capital project that involves updating our science labs, and we know we have a ton of other work we need to do, let's look at the work that needs to be done in the buildings to make them standing, and let's look at our science labs and figure out what makes sense. If we're going to redo our science labs, what other capital work will make sense? So we did a SWOT analysis, a military term, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So the whole team got together, and we looked at six or seven different scenarios, and we said, if we fix the science labs and we fix the heating, what would it look like? If we fix the science labs and we fix the roofs, what would it look like? If we fix the science labs at FDR only, and the heating only in this building, and this, and this? So we looked at several scenarios, and we did a SWOT analysis of each. And what happened afterwards was that major themes evolved. One was, we're still committed to science labs. One other major theme that evolved was, if you want the community to stand behind this, you need to put forward a project that touches on every school. So a little bit about how we looked at getting to what we're going to recommend tonight. We also spent quite a bit of time looking at our finances. Where does our current debt stand now? If we go out for a new loan, how will that impact our debt? We were committed to making sure we don't come to the Board of Education and recommend anything that makes us go into a greater level of debt. So we either keep it the same, or have it come in lower. As you can see, I'm not reading from the slides. I'm trying to give you the experience of what all these bullets mean. And the other thing we did was prepare a presentation for the Board of Education. That's what you're seeing tonight. We spent two meetings reviewing this presentation and saying, it makes sense to us, because we've been living and breathing this, but is it going to make sense to the Board of Education? So here we are tonight. One of the things that guided us was our mission statement. All school districts have, or most school districts have a vision and a mission statement. And our mission statement is that we want to, we empower our community to strive for excellence and embrace the opportunities in our globally-connected world. And we tried to really use that as a lens as we moved forward. So the team, in 2015-16, we developed our plan. We said, we're going to keep the mission and vision statement of the district, but we're going to go down this path of the four Cs and begin with critical thinking. 2016-17, this is where we were this year. We rolled out the concept to the staff. We trained them in an overview, very cursory overview of the four Cs. And we're developing protocols to link professional development and something, so that as we bring in new programs and new curriculum, it's all through the lens of the four Cs. For next year, on the instructional end, we need to roll this out to students. We're going to have student assemblies. We're going to roll it out to the community. And certainly, it'll be a year of staff development, where we really talk about that critical thinking rubric and how to use it for teaching and learning. So critical thinking, here's the definition that's used by the organization that we belong to at leader.org. And actually, we followed that protocol to develop our strategic plan and our facilities plan. We collected and assessed all the relevant information. That was the SWOT analysis. We used systems thinking to say, what's going to make sense? We hope we made sound judgments. And again, this is just our recommendation. And we're going to be faced with a lot of authentic problem solvings as we move forward and say, how do we get to updating 50- and 70-year-old science labs? And making sure that we keep the instructional focus as we think about designing them. So what's our current state with our science labs? We have poor, outdated, non-functioning lab equipment. A lot of our experiments have to be prescribed. This we got from the teachers, as well as the students, because the labs are not functioning. Instead of experimentation, a lot of times, they have to set up a lab where the outcome is already known, but it's just an opportunity for students to go through the process. If we had modern labs, the opportunity to do real experimentation would increase exponentially. The way our science labs are designed, there is not adequate space for collaboration, because we have one sink, we have small areas for the non-experimentation sign, and even the lab sizes themselves are just not, they're not what they would look like if you went into a modern science lab, as far as how do you do the science experiments, and then how do you collaborate on the research? And some of the judgments and decisions that we have to make about our science labs are what we can't do versus what we can do. So if the projects moves forward, and we vote to build new science labs, here's what that looks like. So the given is, we're recommending that our next capital project is to modernize our secondary science labs. That's the number-one recommendation, is to modernize all of our secondary science labs. And if approved and we move forward, then that means that the board authorizes us to them. then secure architects and engineers. And if we secure architects and engineers, the first thing they're getting is a copy of our strategic plan. They're going to know that we're focusing on the four Cs just so that that can guide their thinking. Also, it's a collaborative process. The architects and engineers come and meet with the staff and the teachers and the students and everyone becomes part of the thinking. We're shown lots of designs. Students and staff have plenty of opportunity to weigh in. I've been through a science lab construction project and your voice is critical and unbelievably valuable. I happened to be in a district when we did science labs and they forgot to put the electricity in outlets. So the more eyes, the more people who work in the science department, I think that was just a really bad mistake, but you know, the more people who can weigh in on this. So we will directly involve everybody and we'll be talking about, you know, what does it mean to have a science lab that's digitally rich, safe, modernized, and equipped for all kinds of, all the sciences? Whether it's science experiments that you do in a dry lab or a wet lab. Safety is a big concern. Our students are here, they know what it's like. Our sinks are splashy and unsafe and there's all kinds of problems. We'll be, if approved and moving forward, we'll be putting to the people who were on the team, we toured our own science labs while they were empty and didn't have students in them. And it was eye-opening to see the condition that our science labs are in. They are decrepit and that is not an exaggeration. Again, it's not a science analogy, but you wouldn't teach programming on a computer from 1965. Our newest science lab is from 1965 and they are completely, the labs themselves are falling apart and not functioning. Some of this is a little all over the place, but we do have a profile of a graduate. And you'll see on the bottom that we want them to be mathematically, scientifically, and technologically competent people. And again, we're talking about the type and we want them to be critical thinkers. But if you really can't walk into a science lab and have it functioning, we're missing that one component of what we want our graduates to be and that's scientifically, in a scientifically rich environment. And by rich, I don't mean, we're not going to seek the Taj Mahal of all science labs. We just need science labs that are not 50 to 70 years old. So I'm trying to weave in, again, our focus on critical thinking and the four Cs and the need for science labs as well. And I'll mix metaphors if you will. Old school of thought is you teach the content. Every piece of research indicates that if you teach for memorization, true learning and long-lasting learning does not occur. But if you teach your content embedded in a setting where they're thinking, they're communicating, they're collaborating with their peers, they have a chance to interact with it in a creative way, that's where true learning and true retention occurs. I'm just going to give one plug for digitally rich. With the digital tools we have now, and I'll take a non-science, sorry, I was not a science teacher, humanities all the way, but in a, next time, I'll get one of the science teachers to come in and work with me on this. So let's say you wanted to study the Constitution. Old school, you studied the Constitution, you would memorize pieces of the American Constitution, maybe a few facts about how they got together and did it. And very few people remember anything about the Constitution unless they whip it out and read it again years and years later. But with access to technology, an assignment could look like this. Find three different constitutions from anywhere on the globe. You can do it like that. I didn't do a good snap, that was better. With technology at your fingertips, you can find three different constitutions from three other countries. The students can compare and contrast and say, what does our constitution, what do all three of these constitutions have in common? How are they different? What were the historical circumstances with how this country developed their constitution and another? That's deep learning, that's critical thinking, that's getting students to understand the basis for why you do something versus memorize our Constitution, spit it out on a test. So the shift that we're talking about with our instructional focus on the four Cs is that kind of teaching and learning. And with digital access, you know, it used to take months if a teacher wanted to say, oh, look at three constitutions and you wanted five groups of students and you needed 15 different constitutions, you'd have to get it, make copies, da-da-da-da-da. Now with digital access, they can do that. So whether it's science labs or anything we're looking at, we're really talking about shifting how we teach students. And back to science, we want our students to be in a lab environment that fosters critical thinking, not prescribed labs, fosters collaboration. I don't think we want you to be too creative in those science labs, but that's plenty of room for creativity elsewhere. So we're really trying to mesh this all together, that we looked at our instructional program and we're making changes and we know that our leadership team needs to continuously look at what do we need to do to fix our buildings and update our buildings. I'm going to turn it over to Elliot to do the building condition survey. So in New York State, every five years, you have to do a building condition survey. A building condition survey will point out if your roofs leak and if your, you know, heating system is poor, but it's not going to say you need new science labs. So that's where the district leadership team comes in. A building condition survey tells you whether or not your building can still stand. We know that we need to modernize our science labs and that is outside of a building condition survey. When we completed, when we had our building condition survey in 2000, what does it say here? April of 2016, it says that our district needs $33 million worth of work. And it does. And that doesn't even include science labs because they don't mention science labs. We are here tonight to propose that we look at science labs and one other project. It is not going to be a $33 million project. We just wanted you to see that we're going to take a small piece out of that recommended repairs and say, we think the next step in the district is to do science labs and one other project that will help us in a lot of ways. And I'm going to turn it over to Elliot to move us into now the building condition survey and to talk about, in addition to science labs, the other thing that we're recommending that we put forward as a project.
Thank you. Very much like we've been talking about in this whole process about how we've brought all these different groups together, the instructional, the building, the old facilities steering forum. You know, it doesn't make sense to rebuild a school building unless you have a reason to do so, not just because things are broken, but the school building is where education occurs, so we should be building it in the direction that the education needs to go. Otherwise, you're wasting a lot of time, energy, and resources. So not only is it beneficial, it's actually quite necessary to bring us all onto the same page before we entertain projects such as these. Right at the bottom of the slide, you'll see just in bold letters, are we currently physically built to best achieve our mission? That's the question that drove a lot of the conversations about the design of our schools, the condition of our schools, and where they need to go physically. So here's a couple of statistics that we've shared throughout the building conditions every process, and it's just worth highlighting a couple of numbers. 53% of schools in the country need to be upgraded just to be considered in good condition. We're not alone. We have some of the oldest buildings in the state, but this is going on all over the state and all over the country. The real important numbers are at the bottom. And this is from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Schools without a major maintenance backlog have better attendance by four to five students per thousand. This district has almost 3,600 students in it. That's upwards of 15 kids almost attending school every day because the school's in better shape. They have less dropout rates of 10 to 13 students per thousand. If you go to the high school, you hear Mr. Party and the administrative team, they're consistently talking about our mission is to graduate more students. We're here to educate kids and to provide people the right education for moving on in their lives. 10 to 13 students dropping out per thousand, that's an entire classroom at FDR High School worth of kids that might stick it out, might push a little bit farther to get to graduation if the school was in better condition. And the EPA says the test scores can increase anywhere from 3 to 17%. And of course, that varies by the subject matter, by the student. But if you look at the data, how many kids missed graduation by three or less percent? It's startling. I mean, these are our children. These are people that we can do better for by giving them a better place to learn. So just wanted to share those again because it really does drive a lot of the decision-making throughout the process. So here's what we're looking at, the potential scope of work, science lab renovations at Roosevelt and Haveland. Again, the DLT felt it was crucial to reach every building in the district if we could with these projects. And so because science curriculum is expanding throughout, not just at the high school, but you've got middle school students taking high school-grade science, we're trying to prepare them into a streamlined curriculum going forward. And just some highlighted numbers, APs have increased from three to five. The number of students in AP courses went from 63 to 117. We're not doing less science in Hyde Park. It's not, we're not trending down, we're trending up. Our kids are getting more mathematically involved, more scientifically involved. And the tagline of the project, which is kind of startling when you think about it, is our science labs were built before man first landed on the moon. There's more computing power in my watch than was on the first lunar lander. So it's quite frightening to think that's the environment that we're educating our kids in. At the high school, we've got the pods. The pods are in rough shape. Anybody, you guys have taken some classes in the pods with the aluminum walls that tend to flex when you slam doors. It was built in 1977, certainly wasn't built to the same level of quality as the original building that was put up in 1965. And when we talk about the pods, for those that aren't familiar with that term, that's anything in the 3, 4, 5, and 600 section of Roosevelt High School. There's noticeable issues from HVAC plumbing, structural, again, those walls, the doors, it's in rough shape. So here's where we start to put some critical thinking into marrying the building condition survey with the needs of curriculum. We need new science labs. We have an entire section of a building that's in bad shape. Is there a way to reconstruct that area and incorporate these new science labs in a way that's maybe more cost-effective or even more beneficial instructionally than tearing out the stuff that's in the old labs and rebuilding them in place? And it's important to know that when we look at projects like this, we have to think differently. A brief example is at Haveland Middle School, we did the heating project. We didn't get newer versions of the older stuff that wasn't working. We entirely redesigned the heating system there in a way that somebody 40 years ago would never have conceptualized. So I can't even begin to tell you what the new science labs could look like in the pods. That's what architects and engineers are for. But we're looking at meeting our needs by bringing in what our instruction should look like and then building around it. HVAC, we're looking at every single active elementary school building, Roosevelt High School in its entirety, and the C section of Haveland, the older section, the 1938 section of Haveland, which was not part of our emergency heat project. I use the word "emergency" with emphasis because we did that project quick, fast, and in a hurry to address the A and B sections of Haveland that were not heating properly. We didn't have the luxury of time or the ability to expand that project to things that would be good to have. We had to do the things that we needed immediately. So this would address the balance of that building through this HVAC project.
And for anybody who might not know, it's heating, ventilation, air, and cooling systems.
Yeah, I don't know how much cooling we're going to get, but heating and ventilation.
No, we're not going to get the cooling, but it's the same system.
Not that I don't love it.
Just in case someone didn't know what heating was, heating and ventilation.
Thank you for clarifying. And so again, the purpose is to improve not just how a building is heated, but also how it's ventilated. Fresh air, indoor air quality, these are all important components to education. The vast majority of our heating and ventilation equipment is original to the building. So when Dr. Rychek says that our buildings are 50 to 70 years old, that's how old the heating and ventilation equipment is in the building. Minus a new coil or a new fan here or there, you're talking about a system that was designed in 1935 or earlier, in 1960 or earlier, depending on the building. Every time we've done an indoor air quality test since I've been here in the last five years, one of the recommendations is, you can improve the ventilation of this building by upgrading the heating and ventilation equipment. Kind of a no-brainer. But it goes without saying that if you have a concern about indoor air quality, you have to improve how the air flows through the building. And there's no way to make it better with existing equipment. You can only make it as good as it used to be. Your best hope is to make it as good as it once was, but we even struggled to get there because of the age of the equipment. And I just wanted to note that we did replace boilers in the past, but the boiler is where the heat starts and what we're talking about now is the equipment that's in the rooms where the heat actually comes into the classroom, where the ventilation actually comes and goes from the classroom. So while we have done boilers, it is a major part of the process, it doesn't include the infrastructure and the equipment that brings and delivers that heat to the classrooms.
And before you go on, we skipped over that one bullet. So in addition to, by doing this, we would improve the air quality, which has been a real concern for many staff members and parents and students. The heat distribution is bold because in our buildings, because of the aging equipment, we have a lot of rooms that are incredibly cold or incredibly warm and it doesn't make for good conditions for learning. The number one complaint when we walk through the halls in the winter is the temperature of the rooms. And you can walk through multiple classrooms and see students with coats on and they're not focusing.
Exactly. And one of the other issues tied to that is we have a lot of zone configuration where in order to make one room warmer or cooler, you have to change the temperature in the three or four rooms around it. So a big part of this project would be to make every room, every single classroom and office individually controllable, which would be nice for those of you that have rooms next to each other that have varying temperatures. So in short, the summary of the potential scope of work is to do a science lab renovation project at both Roosevelt High School and Haveland Middle School. By doing Roosevelt's new labs in the pod section, we can address 30% or more of the building condition survey items listed for that location and improve the air quality throughout the district and every single active school building. So our timeline for next steps, we're here today. So that first bullet is why I'm standing in front of you. If the Board decides to move forward, we would retain the services of an architect and engineering firm through an RFP, it's a request for proposal process. That firm would be selected and brought onboard over the summertime, at which point they would then start to design the actual nuts and bolts of what this project looks like. They would be working with us to build towards a capital project vote in December. And between the summer and the December vote, we would have the district financial advisors brought in to discuss the money side of the project. And the last thing the Board would do is actually adopt the resolutions that would go on the docket in December. It's important just to note, process-wise, there's a reason we don't have dollar numbers up there. We're not equipped or qualified to identify what the costs are of this project at this point. That's what we need the architect and the engineer to do. They're going to come in, they're going to look at our building condition survey, they're going to walk the buildings, look at what needs to be done, put realistic, present-day dollar amounts on that. They will advise the Board what the budget should be. We bring the financial planners in to let us know how that affects our debt service, how it affects our budgeting. And then we present all of that to the Board and the Board will decide whether or not to adopt that resolution in October, anticipating a December vote.
And before we open it up to the Board for questions, Kim Niesel has put together, you know, we're here because we're really talking about science and our heating and ventilation system. But because science is the academic focus, we wanted to share a little bit about our science program. And Kim, Mrs. Niesel has prepared an infomatic, you call it?
It's an infographic.
Infographic on our, on science labs.
So an infographic is really just basically a visual presentation with numbers and less words. So I wanted to kind of do that to bring forth some of the instructional pieces of the science lab renovation. And before I start, I really just want to thank, we have at least six science teachers over there in the audience in the back. So if you could just raise your hands to let everyone know that you're here. I really want to thank you for coming out and your support tonight.
We've got chairs in the front row.
I told them they could all sleep late tomorrow.
Students, if you need any, or they don't need anything signed, do they?
Oh, this was the good part.
Hey, hey, hey.
Sorry.
Yours is the good part, yes.
No, it's okay.
No, there's no question.
So I won't read this little blurb because Greer and Elliot talked about the age of our science labs, both at Haveland Middle School and FD Roosevelt High School. I would just read the last sentence and tell you that as enrollment and interest in science courses does continue to increase, our existing space must be renovated to meet our new science, engineering, and technology demands. One example is our district steam fair, which we talked about earlier. I would like to recognize Melinda DeMio for infusing the arts in steam for the first time this year, so thank you. We also have, we're lucky to have six master teachers at the high school. Jen Parker is a math master teacher, but the other five master teachers come from our science department. So that is 42 percent of our high school science department. They are recognized as New York State master teachers. And I do want to just say their names. She couldn't be here tonight, but Colleen Buchi. Dorothy Finley could not be here tonight. Here tonight is Dr. Deborah Kravchuk. She couldn't be here either, Heather Wheeler. And I would finally like to recognize our brand newest master teacher. I just added her name this week. So I want to take a second too to congratulate Ms. Andy Victor. I didn't, I probably could have looked up some numbers from other school districts, but I would, I would, you know, fortunate guess and say that, you know, 42 percent of other high schools, high schools do not have master teachers in their curriculum. And we have one from each subdepartment, physics, biology, earth science, and chemistry. Then I took a look at 2010 versus 2017. I started here in the district in 2010, and at that time, we only had three AP science courses, biology, chemistry, and physics. Currently in 2017, we have five AP science courses. We've added environmental science, and we now have physics I and physics II. Then I looked at some numbers. In 2010, we had 63 students enrolled in AP science courses. And this year, we have 117 students enrolled in those AP science courses. And I took a look at the enrollment. From 2010 to 2017, we had a 16 percent decrease in enrollment, but an 85 percent increase in our AP science courses. So that says a lot about what our students are taking at the high school. And this is just a graph because it's an infographic. So there's 2010 in the light green and in the dark green 2017. Aviva also mentioned earlier Project Lead the Way. We do have pathways in engineering and in the full computer science through Project Lead the Way. We're very interested in adding a biomedical science pathway, and we really can't do that until we have updated science labs in place. I also looked at some growing careers in science. I got these numbers from the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics. Employment of life, physical, and social science occupations is projected to grow 7 percent from 2014 to '24, and that means 97,000 new jobs. You can also look at the median wage for all occupations being around 36,000, but for those science occupations being 62,000. And that was from 2015. And then also just that increase in healthcare occupations, which is where that biomedical science comes in, expected to grow in that same timeframe from, expected to grow 19 percent, which is much faster than the average for all occupations, adding millions of new jobs. I did want to point out that we did, New York State did, adopt the new science learning standards based on the next-generation science standards in January, and we are expected to implement those in 2017. So it's really kind of a great time to be talking about science lab renovation with the changes that are coming with these new standards. And it is the first time ever that engineering standards have really been written into science content standards. So, you know, kids will need to follow the engineering design process all through their senior year in high school, and we just don't have the facilities to kind of make that happen. I included our mission as well, just because we do want to match our mission with everything that we're doing with these lab renovations. And just a quick before and after picture. The before picture is just to kind of show you how crowded some of our lab rooms are with separate spaces for kind of your classroom instruction and then your lab work. And then just a possible, maybe future picture of how it could look a little bit better.
We don't have the after yet, it's just a potential after.
Potential, future, possible, maybe. That's it.
So now you see why I didn't go after Kim. Thank you. So at this time, again, the district leadership team, it's been two years in the making, we wanted to plan our next future capital project that would really be combined some of our building construction needs and our academic needs, and make sure that we're tying in our future focus, the focus of the four Cs. So we wanted to keep the project small, knowing that, you know, increases in our debt service, we want to keep them relatively flat. We believe this would come in under and definitely not increase our current level of debt service. So, and probably if we do just this, it could bring it down a little. But this time, we'll open it up to questions and actually seek direction from the Board of Education.
Elliot, if I can start with the tail end question. You stopped in the presentation, obviously, you stopped with the December vote.
Yes, sir.
Going forward, best-case scenario, when would we or when could we possibly expect a FDR starting semester with renovated labs?
I, okay, so I'll tell you what I do know, and we can kind of figure it out together. As it stands currently, the State Education Department's backlog for project review stands at 32 weeks. So that's always the linchpin of the conversation now. As of last, or as of earlier this month, the Director of the Office of Facilities Planning has made a commitment to bettering that number through a couple of different avenues at the state's availability. However, none of that's in play yet. So assuming that that's the number, let's go with the worst-case scenario to make it realistic. I've never seen it go past 40 weeks. I've seen it at 32 and 36 consistently over the last four years, sometimes as low as 20. But a 32-week review time would probably mean that we don't get to go out to bid until next summer for the following summer.
So what year is that?
We'd be looking at...
Going out to bid?
So we do a vote in '17, we bid late '18 for summer of '19. We could start, some of these rooms could be in use by fall of 2019.
Is there any way of breaking apart, is there any variation in the approval process depending on the complexity or the nature of the changes?
Yes, but not any that would apply to a science lab renovation. The expedited reviews are usually for in-kind replacements, and we're trying to not do that. We're trying to do a comprehensive renovation.
All right, and I have one last question. Kim brought it up at the end about the fact, you know, we're increasing students, increasing students in the science program, but until the last sentence almost she issued was the fact that that occurred over a period of time when we'd had a significant reduction in student population. For a renovation like that, it may almost seem like a godsend because we continue to look at the availability and the utilization of our buildings. Might we be close enough in time to be able to work year-round on the labs because we could free up an entire pod to work on while keeping the rest of the building up and running?
I would wait until we get an architect onboard to decide that. There are always options for balancing occupancy with construction. You know, you kind of go into it planning for summer work, but there are other avenues we could explore to temporarily relocate students within the campus, not sending them off to other buildings and such.
Part of my negative feeling about that, I've been on the board for, you know, 12, 13 years, and I have never seen options that provided us, when we're doing a capital improvement like this, to allow us to work through the year. We've always been stopped dead in our tracks at times because of the buildings.
There are high schools undergoing year-round renovations currently that have work happening throughout. Sometimes they'll use an underutilized building within the district, sometimes they'll bring in temporary classroom units where they'll, you know, park classrooms or build temporary structures on the campus. So there are options to do it, where you can condense and compress. One of the other things we could do also is, one summer we do two pods, and one summer we do two pods, so that we don't do this whole thing in one shot. We can, if we, if we're lucky enough to start it summer of '19, it could be a summer of '19 and summer of '20 project. If for some reason we get pushed off, it could be a '20 and '21. The goal would be to have this project completed before the next building condition survey of 2020, if we can.
And the suggestions you had in between, I'll make a comment, they're all community winners. They all love to do things that foul things up, like moving their students to another building so they can move them back, or changing the schedules so they're here, you know, they're not at the same bus schedules. Those kinds of things are not going to get valuable support that we're going to need for this project.
Right. And the beauty of this process and working with the DLT as a whole is that we have Mr. Partey and Mr. Rowella in the room with us, we'll have Mr. Shaw in the room with us, we'll have parents and faculty members in the room to give us that feedback of what is and isn't feasible. We'll talk about what's possible, but certainly impact to students is the last thing we want to have, and disruption of instruction when we're building to make them perform better. We don't want their, the students' instruction to suffer, especially for those in critical stages of their careers.
And a final thought over the next four years, if we can arrange to bring back the students that we're sending out to the college world this year and the year after and the year after that, to get their valuable feedback and how significant the faults we have have impacted them while going on. Because looking around at the kids we've talked about and stuff like that and haven't been at the award ceremony yesterday, the number of students entering into the fields that are going to benefit from these science labs, the percentage of those students is amazing.
Agreed.
And their aspirations are beyond belief. You know, when I graduated high school in 1957, my first thought was I wanted to be an engineer. And now they're talking about, I want to be a bio, body, you know, down to that niche that they've learned enough about and understand enough about and have worked enough about to say, this is what I want to do, this is where I can help. And that's the other word that I found amazing amongst all the kids that have talked recently is they're talking about getting an education and entering into a field. And almost the first word is because I can feel I can make a difference, I can help, I can make an improvement. Whereas in my day, a lot of us were talking about, I feel I can make a living, a significant turnaround from where I was to where these students are.
Any other comments from the board? I guess my input would be that I like the tentative timeline that's on the screen as we speak. I think that we should pursue that direction, simply because I think we're underserving our community by allowing the science labs to exist for another minute. I am curious about precisely what can be done to improve or replace the pods. I like the idea of doing both at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just kind of want to say that, been in the district for a while, my wife was on a team. And on the team, they were looking at the district, my daughters were in elementary school. And they were all excited because that was the science they wanted to change. My daughters are graduating college, we haven't done anything.
Any further comment?
Yeah, I would like to kind of add something. So in this infographic at the end, there's a photo of the four. And that photo is of probably the best science lab that we have at FDR. I've been in all three, and it, this is considered very nice compared to the other ones that we take science classes in, so it's kind of a...
Thank you, James, for pointing that out. That's actually a very flattering picture of the science lab. If we move forward, a big part of how we share with community is to take some real up-close shots of what our current science labs look like. And you saw how many people stood up that were on the district leadership team. And one of the things we did do was tour our own science labs, and so we know that the conditions are, that that's a very flattering picture. I do want to say that we had our current students, because of the timeline, we had our current students make a video that's being edited. So that should have, should we receive permission for, to go down this road, we would have a student-designed video to help us starring Megan Marshall out there, now she's in it. You know, because we really involve the students and the staff a little bit. The staff will be very much involved moving forward. But when we started to talk about the science labs, we did go to the students. And I will tell you that every single student at the secondary level recognizes the need, and they're not going to be the beneficiaries of this. This will be done after they're all gone. But they feel so strongly about future generations already that they were willing to help us put together a video in the hopes that we might move in this direction.
Aviva?
I just want to add one thing. And I've had the opportunity to go through all the labs, and I think it's important that everybody understands that the condition of the labs and the facilities that exist today aren't a result of neglect or poor maintenance or anything other than they've outlived their useful life. They've just, they've been out there, they've been used long and well for many years. But some of the finishes and fixtures are just literally worn out. I think that, you know, the district has done a good job of trying to hold things together, and I think teachers should be commended for the way they've been creative and the way that they've been able to use some of those spaces, but it's time to move beyond that. And, you know, it's not the representation of what we as a district want to be going forward. And I would hope that if there's a video out there, I think it would probably show that, you know, show those conditions. And I think it'd be very valuable to get that out as soon as possible. And I would encourage us to do something where we bring people in and give them the opportunity to see it. I don't think anybody would look at, I mean, I have to admit that before lab, I don't remember seeing that lab.
No. It's very flattering.
We saw a lot of labs, and you get that one? That's yours? Oh, okay. Because, yeah, that's actually not a bad-looking one, but there are others out there that are far worse than that, unless it was a great job of Photoshop, so.
Virtual reality.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, there are 30 desks in front of that room, and that's kind of why we took it. It is, it is a very, very crowded room, and it was hard to get a picture that really looked like what you'd want to see, I guess. But it's extremely crowded to have 30 desks. You can probably only see 15 of them, but it's, you can, the video, I've seen the video prototype, and it definitely shows some up-close and personal pictures of the labs.
I don't know if there's any video left, but back when my, last of my students graduated from here, back in the 1995, 96, 97, there were interesting videos being made, probably, not videos, probably superate movies, of some of the adjustments that some of the science teachers made to teach subjects, like propulsion and showing a wheeled cart being driven through the parking lot of the school powered by a CO2 tank that was expending air at the back, or robots that used to roam the hallways with kids walking behind them at class time. Because this was a demonstration going on in class they couldn't handle in the classroom, said they were taking over the hallways, you know. You might want to add, you know, we don't want to do this again, ever, please.
Hopefully, we've exhausted conversation on the topic. I guess the question I have for the administration is whether you've got feedback from the board that you need in order to move forward with additional planning?
We had, do we have consensus to move forward?
We're prepared to do so.
Thank you.
Do we need to formalize it, I guess is the question.
I don't think we need anything formal.
We'll need something in September for a referent.
October?
October.
Wherever the timeline went to. Yeah.
Very good.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll accept a motion for public participation.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? All in favor? Motion carries. Motion carries. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the board may speak up, step up to the podium and tell us what you think.
Rick Party, 42 Old Post Road, Statsburg, New York. My two students are no longer in the building, but I have 1,200 that are. Thank you very much for moving forward, they deserve it, they certainly deserve it. We have had difficult situations within those science labs, but the reality is our teachers and our students have excelled. We continue to do very, very great things. I can only look forward to what we'll be able to do when we move forward on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bree Penny, I teach at Haviland, and I just want to say, it was pointed out that we have some amazingly intelligent and motivated and driven students that go on to do wonderful things in science. And I just want to point out that with the addition of better science classes, better technology, better, you know, high-tech stuff, we could inspire so many more. And, you know, we, there's so many that aren't even interested because it's old, it's outdated, it's boring to them. So we have the driven kids that are already, you know, into it, and they're going to move on, but we, I think we could reach so many more with the updated labs, so thank you also for moving forward.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? At this time, I'll accept a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any conversation? All in favor? Would someone like to respond to the comments that we received?
Oh, go ahead, Denise.
I believe, I believe that you're right. I believe our students will excel. I think that more will get involved. And I just, I agree with it all, I'm glad we're moving forward.
And while there's still some here, I would really just really, really like to thank the district leadership team. These were long meetings, they were rich meetings in the dialogue and the discussions, and I really can't thank the district leadership team enough. Many of you are still here tonight, you gave up nights, you gave up days, you gave up a lot of time, and it's because of that team that we were able to make a big push to get this recommendation in. So I really want to thank the members of the team.
Assuming there are no more comments, we'll move forward with the agenda. Are there any board subcommittee reports?
Well, I'm not sure if this fits, but I was nominated and accept the opportunity to attend the Dutchess County, Countywide Shared Services Initiative.
Oh, yeah.
That is directive of the governor, and the county executive is formulating a team which includes representatives from all the town agent, or government agencies throughout the county, including school districts. Just to report that the, the purpose of this is try to find opportunities to reduce the tax burden on the residents of the county. They've gone through a series of different areas of which they're going to look at, and I'll be working with Greer and Linda to try to identify what might be specific to the school district where we can share, you know. And we have some things that we work with now, things like fuel with the town police, and I'm not sure how formal that is, but it may be something that we could formalize and take credit for. There may be other initiatives that we look at, whether it be bidding processes, you know, there's even things like health insurance, they talk about health insurance, and you really have to, how far we want to get into it, or how big of a leap we want to take. But it's a process that will go on, and I think the next meeting, there's a meeting June 1st, but I think that's going to avoid the education group, because I think that there's another, if there's something with superintendents on June 1st that isn't going to allow them to participate, so.
Right, the commissioner of education's coming?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I forgot. Little detail.
Little detail.
So I think it's June 19th is the next full meeting in which the education group will be there, so.
Thank you. The technology committee, subcommittee met on Monday, and the good news is that our application for technology funds is nearing the end of the line as far as the approval process. We had to resubmit for some minor changes, and that's taken care of. So it looks like we may actually get the funding this summer in time for next school year. This is fantastic news. So we talked, started talking about the process of actually receiving the technology and how to go about planning for the installation, training, and moving forward with all the advantages that it provides. Are there any other subcommittee reports? Very good. There is no unfinished business on the agenda, we'll move to the consent agenda. This time, I'll accept a motion and agree with the, as stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we had a tenure reception this evening, and I would like to point out that three of our tenure recipients have stayed and are in our audience, Andrea, Ashley, and Caitlin. Four! Oh, Aaron's hiding in the closet, Jackie. All right, okay, so I'll say them, hallway. One more, sorry, hallway. Okay. So we've got Andrea, Ashley, Caitlin, Jackie, and Aaron. So when we vote on the consent agenda, they will be receiving tenure, so. Sorry. Ah, we have two administrators who will also be receiving tenure, you know. Mike Ruela, Assistant Principal of FDR, and Rick Party, Principal of FDR, will also be receiving tenure. Sorry. I was just looking at the teacher list.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries, congratulations. At this time, we'll move forward with agenda item 11.1, special education placements. This time, I'll accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend this adoption is presented to us, and commend the young, the people working on it, it's entitled, 33-page report on IEP's approvals, it gets kind of busy this time of year. Converting that to numbers, it's over 125 IEPs being finalized in the last three weeks, basically. So Heather looks a little tired back there. She's the one that stands behind the rowers and swaps, snaps the whip.
Very good. We'll conduct a vote, all in favor. Motion carries. At this time, I'll accept a motion for 11.2, Therapeutic Horizons Occupational Therapy Services.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. I'll accept a motion for 11.3, amended solvent addendum.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll accept a motion for 11.4, agreement for special education services.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll accept a motion for 11.5, tax refund.
So moved. Second.
Nobody want to get the money back.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. I'll accept a motion at this time for 11.6, reduction in assessment and refund of taxes.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll accept a motion for 11.7, stipulation of settlement, Hyde Park United Employees Association.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll accept a motion for 11.8, a new position, a floating nurse.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I want to say that several times this year, we've been stuck without a nurse at least one elementary school due to absenteeism, or can't, we cannot find replacements. This is going to be able to ensure that we have the safety in all our schools. This is one of the things our health committee is very much supportive of.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll accept a motion for 11.9, a new position, occupational therapist.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. This time, I'll entertain a motion for 11.10, destroy ballots from the 2016 election.
So moved. Second.
So this is destroying the ballots from last year's election.
Which should have been done after six months.
Yes. Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to re-enter public participation.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. If anyone would like to address the board, here's your opportunity, please step up to the microphone. Bueller? No. At this time, I'll accept a motion to close public participation.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. Other matters deemed necessary by the board? Anybody want to bring anything up? Upcoming meetings? There's no school on Monday, I guess that's next Monday, a concert, FDR and Haviland Concert in the Park on Wednesday, June 7th, and the next Board of Ed meeting on Thursday, June 8th.
No school tomorrow.
Well, that's not on the list.
That's exactly. School's back out.
That's right.
Oops.
There is no need for a second executive session.
Hooray.
At this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries enthusiastically, we're adjourned.